Her husband.
Wish that would be you.
And her husband happens to have plans for it.
Yeah, I bought my wife a gun one time.
I make a motion when we come out of executive session.
Second. Hey, Gary, it's on you now.
Uh, okay.
Motion second.
Motion second. What were we thinking, motion second on?
To adjourn.
Come out of executive session.
Alright, come out of executive session.
Yeah, motion by Mr. Wilcox, second Mr. Bishop, come out of executive session. All in favor, say aye. All opposed.
Hey, James.
Good morning.
Let them.
I figured that.
Let the minutes reflect no actual stake in that executive session, please. Thank you.
Okay, no, okay.
John.
We're getting hungry. Twenty-six seconds, twenty-six minutes. Good morning. Good to see you back. That's what we're asking you. You buying? I like thin crusts. You know, y'all, y'all two are not running for the same district, so y'all don't have to sit too far apart.
So Laura, do you own his increase in his budget?
Sir?
Do you have it broke down worth the $200,000 is for?
Dual role. I understand.
Okay, alright. So I missed the other day, I missed y'all went over the fire department and the EOC?
Fire department. They went over themselves.
Yeah, I'm sorry you missed, Jay.
Yeah, me too.
We really, we really got you on that one.
Uh huh, I see that.
Mr. Sullivan.
Is it? Y'all over here showing a $200,000 increase.
That's if you put the, is that what the, either 750 or?
I'm showing 163, 114.
Getting within my arms, gotta get a little longer there, Artie John.
Yeah, it is. What do y'all have questions about?
I was asking, uh, where, where's it, what's the 163,000 increase?
He has some personal property imaging software, some computers, and there's a few other things in there.
Do you have a, like a?
I got, uh, the thing, where's the attached, I guess?
This, need to see this.
Yeah, I guess.
This one.
Is this a one-time expenditure on this 160,000 mostly, or?
It's a combination of several things. It's partly this.
I'll, I'll show you.
There you go, that's the issue you're looking for. It's the, um, increase, it's the raises in here, it's ACAC software.
That is, that's imaging for personal property, so we can do away with some of the filing cabinets, because it's just packing up, we don't have room.
So you're gonna start like?
Start scanning, and this is what we've been trying to do forever, to get, I want all my records, you heard me say, putting all my records online.
Yeah.
So if somebody wants to view a sketch at their house, they can look at it online. And, and I'm working with Rusty on that, and those are the two things. I think one item's a $13,000 item, the other one is a $5,400 item.
Yeah.
And then, as you go through each item, I got it broken down, um, let's see.
Yeah, these two aren't that much.
No, there's, um, AutoCAD license for a new employee, there's some new office chairs for about four people, um, new license for, uh, two people and CE hours for another.
But do y'all have a copy of this?
No.
Um, no, we just got your total, we got two figures, your last year budget and this year budget.
Yeah, we don't have any breakdown, anything.
Okay, we don't have the line, do y'all have the line item of my budget?
We have classes, computers.
We just got a sheet that says what it was last year and this year.
And I'll just go down each and every one of them. Item 476, it says mills and lodging. Um, I originally had 2,500 in, now I have 3,500 in, uh, because, uh, 476, it'd be, uh, my brother and Michelle will be taking more classes, so there's gonna be more travel. So I put in a thousand dollars extra there.
So is there any word that he may be retiring? Is that true? Who, Pat?
Who?
Okay, alright.
I guess that came when you talked about.
I mean, he's gonna run for mayor, but it's a part-time position.
Okay.
Um, so that's a thousand dollar increase there for travel. Then on, uh, item 480, uh, I went from 3,000 to 7,500, which would be a $4,500 increase, and it's the new licenses for Billy and Pat, and the CE hours, uh, that they'll need to go to these classes, and then also my new employee, Michelle Young, if she wants to go, uh, to the courses.
Will that be recurring next year? Will that be staying in there? Okay, alright.
Uh, and then postage, that's always, it's, who knows? It's 19,500 what I had, I increased to 22,500.
Yeah.
I mean, it could go up, could go down.
Alright.
It's just to have it in there. Um, then line item 542, that's Lance's vehicle, uh, for, we have a thousand dollars there for any type of oil changes, maintenance and everything, and, uh, he requested, uh, to put in undercarriage protection under it and possible wind attempt, so I went from a thousand to 2,500 there to cover those two items. Ten, yeah, I should've brought my glasses. 543, I had 2,500 in there last year. I put 4,000 in there this year, um, and that's to get, uh.
Here, John, we got your pair.
Yes, sir. Oh, yeah.
Oh, I see the numbers.
That's to get, uh, new office chair for Raymond, Sammy, Monica, Michelle, and David.
You need to put some glasses in your budget.
I know, I know. No, they're at my office, I promise, I promise you that. Uh, let's see, service and maintenance contract on 544, uh, it was 9,000, it's 12,500. That's with the new employee, David Gunner. We have to add a new AutoCAD license, uh, for that.
I don't sound like any, they're just a lot of little things. It's amazing it's 160,000.
The main thing is salaries. I mean, if you.
That's the biggest part of it.
Oh, yeah. If, if you were to break down everything, uh.
Well, you've got, from the original amount that was in the professional fees and services last year, that's where we had to make the amendment for the GIS. There's a little bit of increase in there. There's some in office supplies and materials, office furniture and equipment. It's just overall, there's quite a few areas, plus you take the raises that's in there and all.
Alright. The majority of it is, is, uh, the licenses, computers, office, uh, furniture and things like that, but of the 163 increase, that's gonna be salaries, I dare say.
Yeah.
I, I, just to guesstimate, and I haven't gone through, but I dare say 100,000 of the 163,000 is gonna be that.
I got you. Hey, on this stuff you started, Apex Software, did you say you're gonna put it online? Is that where people are gonna be able to get access to it?
Yes, that we've been trying.
So then we can probably, hopefully one day attach that to our viewer, so we can just go all through that. How are we coming on getting everybody trained and we can move forward on that?
I, I, I think we're there.
Are we?
We're there. Um, uh, just basically tying up the loose ends right now. Everybody's pretty much, I guess, trained to the extent before we go forward. I mean, there's always gonna be something new, because we can add so much to that GIS, I mean.
I'm just looking forward to us getting that viewer up and going, where we can really maximize it.
I'm, I'm warning that, and like, you've been trying to get the GIS for how many ever years you were trying before I?
Yeah.
Was elected, but, uh, we're there now, and we should be, uh.
I mean, that's gonna help us with our garbage billing here, too.
It'll help you with everything, and, uh, just our deal with Entergy, uh, I'm still in discussion with them.
Oh, on the, you should stay on?
Yeah, and Entergy, on every meter out there that they have, and I'm sure Southern Pines the same way, they already have it labeled, whether it's a shop, a mobile home, a house, a duplex, uh, all that. That is something I'm trying to get, and, uh, which will benefit everyone. We could do that with our records, but it'd be wonderful to cross-reference with Entergy's records.
Yeah.
And, um, but yeah, we're close to where I wanted to be seven years and seven months ago, getting everything online. I didn't know it was so complicated. I figured if you had a computer in your office.
Right.
With today's technology, you should be able, and that's what I wanted from day one. And a lot of people say, well, people are gonna see errors or things like that, and I said, well, that, I, I wanna know if I have an error, so I can fix it.
Yeah.
Uh, but we're there, and I, I anticipate probably within a year, it depends on Rusty, uh, if he can get everything up.
Then working with Central Plan Development, getting it all tied together.
We, we, we want it to be as user-friendly as we can, and I, I would like for when you pull up a map and you have a parcel, I'd like you to be able to click that parcel, and it pulls up the sketch of what's there, uh, uh, what your voting district is in, I mean.
How much your taxes were?
How much they were.
Who paid the taxes, if they're paid?
Yeah, I mean, just all that, and then, uh, hopefully whenever we find out the new contracts and that for Waste Management, which I'm sure probably be Waste Management, to start, hopefully, layering with other entities, private entities, uh, Entergy, Waste Management, and see if we can combine all the information. It only benefits everybody.
Yeah, 'cause the last time we did this, y'all, we actually hired somebody to go out and count houses, and then they end up quitting, and we didn't even ever get a complete counting, so.
And this, this should, this should eliminate it, uh, or help eliminate any issues that we, we have. And then Trudy, I mean, she's great, and she works well with our office, and, I mean, we're, we find most of the stuff. Uh, it's just a headache with everybody trying to dodge paying, what is it, $40 a quarter or whatever it is?
Yeah.
Ridiculous. Any other questions?
We good, I guess. That was short and sweet.
Yep. Just all mine budgets, it always, I mean, it's salaries, and the rest is paper. Know what I mean?
I, who are you going over next?
Well, um.
Got, um.
Rusty's gonna come in, but Dale's here, so if you wanna go over this one, I can.
Yeah, you can jump in, Dale.
Come on, Dale.
We don't even have that, anything for department.
That was on the, well, y'all don't have your sheets from last time?
I wasn't here last time.
I got mine back, man, back in my office, I can go get it.
I got mine at home.
I'm gonna look, I'm gonna get mine, it's on desk.
This has been such a hot topic, you know? Why does he need that?
Uh, there's to run his office, you know, there's. Well, that's insurance, that's insurance is in there too. We pay the insurance, and there's a lot of the office fees we pay. And all of that, we, we have to pay him, uh, for certain things too, that he does set up.
Thank you, sir.
So, what is this here?
That's the miscellaneous ones.
That his fees don't pay?
150 and 160.
150 and 160. Well, he'll be in, I'm sure you can ask him directly.
Oh, I won't think I have to.
So the 15 budget was 17 million, the 16 budget's 13 million?
Yeah, you know, we amended, um, last year to bring several million more over into roads and all. We're bringing over almost three this year for, for roads. I mean, we can amend it at any time during the year. There's just no reason to inflate the budget, if all the work's not gonna be done on road projects, you know? Because of rain, time, or contracts, or whatever, there's just no reason to inflate it. The money's still there. We just had 3 million that we had brought over the year before, and we added two during the year, and we're still gonna have about 3 million in road projects there, but there's just no reason to.
Well, we, we inflated it some last, last year because we had old fan and, and we had to pay it in early and whatnot, and we had all that money to come out, so, and we didn't know what, we didn't have any idea what amounts it'd be.
And you know, you've got, you've got cash out there if you, if you wanna do more projects than that 3 million, but there's just no reason to inflate the budget, you know, um.
So then, how do we do that? Cause I thought you had to balance your budget.
Well, it is balanced, it, it is balanced here. That, that's, we're, what we're gonna use, we're showing that we're gonna use 3 million worth of cash, just about. Everything else will be paid for in the revenue we receive, but about 3 million of it will be for any kind of projects y'all wanna do, overlay projects, or road projects, or whatever.
Well, we're doing overlay projects, huh?
In any time, if you need to amend that, we can.
But I guess I'm not understanding what happens, so the middleage is generated for this coming year will be 13 million dollars, 13,900.
Right, which includes 2.8 million of cash that we're bringing forward.
From the previous year, yeah, okay.
And the only reason we didn't use for that, we were out of time.
So really, we're gonna, we're gonna have 16 million dollars in there.
No.
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 A 13 million.
That would be 11.
So then we're only gonna generate?
By 11.
10 million dollars.
10, 11, somewhere around there.
We're going to generate with all our receipts, not only our billage, but with everything else that we get in, it's about 11 million, a little over 11.
Yeah, cause this is right from 10.
Cause we're moving over 2.28.
Alright, Dale, I got you.
And then on the bridge, um.
What number is that, 16? So we have 56, and we're bringing over 2.1?
Well, like, what will come out of cash, we're gonna bring over the same 1.2 per star bridge, because it won't be paid for in this year, and we're gonna bring over the same 500,000 for that cover, for brand, and that will come out of cash, just like it's the last year, it'll just be brought over again.
Yeah.
That's the one that's going on the, uh, State Aid Road on 80 Highway?
Yes.
Yeah.
Hey, where are we at on our Pearl Bridge?
Yeah, oh, they drive, they're driving pile and all, you know.
They're there, alright, that's great.
Get a photo op, Jake.
You ain't kidding, that's a good idea.
The reason that you can see that, that bridge is down is because we paid last year that 2 billion, 250,000 for the Southwest Rankin.
That bridge, yeah.
We wrote that check out, so we won't have that again this year, and that's why that's.
That was on the, um, yeah, Vertlick Road.
West Rankin Parkway.
West Rank, West Rankin, yeah, yeah.
So that's why that amounts, because we paid that, and we don't have that expense this year.
Good job, Dale.
Thank you.
Just stay away, you're right here, I just asked you something, I.
Uh-oh, you thought you was through.
No, I just wanna ask, how are we on this, I'm, I've seen all these calls on this, uh, this long arm running. I know you're trying, but we're, we're behind because we didn't get to use it last year much.
The Bush hog deal?
Yeah.
Why didn't you get to use it last year?
Yeah, it goes back to that, it goes back to that same thing I told you.
Personnel.
Personnel, since it's the election year, I can't add the personnel to run the machine.
But we didn't, we didn't get to run them last year hardly much, because we didn't have personnel to run them. So now they're sticking out worse, growing out worse, we don't have personnel now, so now they're getting even that much worse. I mean, just.
I got you.
Yeah, I should've put them on, I, I really wasn't aware, you know, I just know Steve, that approved, and I went, Ms. Laura's saying, you know, and I put, she said, no, I said, no.
Cause what's gonna happen, the school district is fixing to start sending work orders, because.
Yeah, well, I understand that.
The buses.
The buses.
Yeah, I understand that.
I got a little small dump truck, and you got, and I'm serious, I notice what they're doing. You gotta get over toward the center line on these roads, cause these limbs are slapping your mirrors off.
Oh, they'll knock, knock you to death.
So, I mean, the school buses fixing to really start jumping out there.
Do we not have, how many people we got to be able to run those at all? A couple?
Well, see, I don't, right now, I'm, I'm short, because that's people quit, and that's, well, that's when I, they happen to leave, so I'm down to three tractor operators on each, each of my three dogs, really.
Well, at least it's not growing too fast now, without no drought.
Well, it's all down, and we're trying to address some of the long arm work, too.
Yeah, okay. Well, I, I'm, I'm just anticipating school, and when they start getting the, they're gonna flood us then.
Oh, yeah, they're ready, there's no doubt.
Okay, alright. Thank you.
Thank you.
Keep up the good work, man.
Janice is getting rusty.
Okay, alright.
Does anybody else freeze to death up in here?
Feels great, man, feels wonderful.
I'm, uh, I'm not, I'm not eating too warm, that's for sure.
We, uh.
My blood pressure's probably real low.
Keep you calm in here, you know, we get hot, tempers may flare.
Yesterday was 102 over 72.
James, it's not hot out there walking the streets, is it? You, are you done?
Tell it, brother, might be August 25th, maybe three weeks later, too.
Yeah, exactly. Is it two or three? Is it three weeks?
Jay, that's how District 3 rolls.
Scola, the North Barley County, where I am.
Yeah, it's 1, it's 101 versus 103?
Exactly. And I was on the North Shore yesterday, so I was even better.
Oh, yeah. So that was really great. That was, what is that, 100?
Yeah, cool breezes coming off the water.
Down south, we got the tropical breeze.
Yeah, there you go.
It's hot up there, the fish don't even know they bite, do they?
Well, that's just gonna make you really terrible. You gotta be out there by all the water, knowing you can slush right over there. I can touch it, you know?
Yeah, and hear people in the backyard playing in the swimming pool.
Yeah, yeah.
They don't invite you over there to go swimming?
That's something on kids, we play in the sprinter.
I remember years ago, I walked up on one, and they were having a big old party and stuff like that, and they, they called me, and they were saying, come on over. So me and my kids, we went on over, and I probably gained quite a few, few votes down that way. I don't remember how many was there, but there was, there was probably 60 or 70 people there, so.
Okay, here's Rusty.
There he is.
How are you, gentlemen?
Good.
Alright, what number is IT?
It is 152.
Which page? Oh, never mind, I got it.
Oh, wait, I want you, I want you to see, Jay, that, how much larger this is.
Thank you, yeah, I can read it.
Yeah, cause Dale, you, uh, you bailed John out, his arm's forgetting. Went a lot faster once you gave him them glasses.
Well, it looks like you're reducing.
160 what?
Yeah, his is down.
Sorry. You're reducing?
Yeah, I'm reducing.
Why are we bringing them in here?
We wanna know the trick.
Is that, well, the, the thing we've been doing, um, is, is a couple of things have decreased. Our agreement with Microsoft has changed, okay? Um, we, we now own legally Windows in Office for every computer in the county, and every computer in the county going forward.
You own what now?
We own Windows in Office, okay, for all the computers in the county.
So we're not doing the upgrades anymore?
Uh, where we're currently at is, is, we're, we're, we're in shape. We own all the way up to 2013 in Office and Windows 10.
I was wondering, you're saying we're in compliance?
We're in compliance, correct, correct. Then when I started here, we had major compliance issues, um, which is saving the departments a lot of money. You know, they don't have to buy Windows in Office with their computers. So, um, we've, we've cut off a whole lot of telephone services that weren't needed anymore. Some of our service contracts are down. Um, the big thing that we wanna do this coming year is change our email service, and I'll go into quick detail. Craig and I have met about this. We're in a need in this year to start implementing an email archiving system, okay? Public records requests for emails is becoming a more common thing.
Well, then, hang on now.
Go ahead, go ahead.
If we don't keep them, then we can legitimately say, we don't have them.
That's correct.
Unfortunately, the EATIS Commission says you must keep them.
Why?
Emails, I understand, we're talking about emails. We're not talking about text messages yet, although that's also an issue that we have.
Yeah, we have to jump to.
It, it would not be, there would be major repercussions if the response is, we don't have any emails that respond to your request.
For example, right now, let's say, um, there, there was, um, an issue between two employees here about a year and a half ago. Obviously, I'll leave their names out, but.
Yeah, probably a good thing.
Their emails were requested. Um, one of those employees had deleted those emails, and it was for a legal proceeding, um, and we could not produce those emails. So we're, we're at the stage where we're starting to become legally required to archive those emails.
So we couldn't produce them, what happened?
Uh, the EATIS Commission would have a problem with the fact that we don't have a system that allows for that capture, because they are deemed to be public record.
I just hate getting into all that, man, cause that's a whole nother headache of maintaining.
I completely understand, but you have.
I'm just wait till we have to do it.
Well, the problem, though, is that you don't ever know when you're gonna get a public record act request.
Thought we'd already had some, though.
It's gonna relate back in time, so it'd be too late to capture the public record if you wait for a request to come.
What, do we keep 30 days now?
We keep nothing now.
Well, I guess 30 days is on everybody's phone, then.
Yeah, but if you delete it, it's gone.
Yeah.
You're something, wait a minute. 30 days on your phone?
Well, you can set it, I guess, however you want it.
Yeah, 30 days, all time, two weeks, that kind of.
Each individual could probably set it differently.
We would be.
I didn't, I didn't know that option was there.
Subject to a lot of criticism for not having that archiving of email tech built.
And you're talking about archiving for what period of time?
So.
As long as Department of Archivist history requires it, and there, it depends on what the subject matter is, Jerry. There are some things that are matters of a permanent record.
Huh.
Just depends on which one of them is, uh, and Archivist history declares you keep these kinds of records for. Just depends on which one of them is, uh, and Archivist history declares, you keep these kinds of records for this much time, and some of those answers are permanent.
Yeah, but there's no way that we can do that, I mean, that just, you're talking about boo coodles of.
Until we get greater clarification, and see, this is the thing, this disconnect between the way the Ethics Commission addresses what is a public record, and what the reality is, and what the cost is to do it. For instance, on text messaging, Ethics Commission, in their wisdom, they just came out and said, yeah, those are, those are public record, if it's on a county phone, those are public record, you gotta, you gotta try to preserve that. What they didn't think about, and what they didn't apparently know about, was that the service providers are the only people with access to be able to do the archiving.
Yeah.
Rusty can't archive texts because he's not allowed into the code that captures that, and the providers won't let him. So you tell the Ethics Commission that, and they're like, well, it's a public record, do the best you can.
Well, we did, we did the best we could.
Exactly.
And I'm, I'm glad ours don't keep everything, good Lord, that's crazy.
How do you plan to resolve it, Rusty?
We could either purchase a, an archiving device, which I don't recommend, what I'm recommending in the budget for next year is we move to a cloud-based service from Microsoft, okay? Right now, everybody has one gig of email storage, we would move up to fifty gigs email storage, unlimited archive, unlimited what they call DLP, so in other words, we could say, anybody in the sheriff's department, if they delete an email, it never goes away, so in other words, to match those archives and histories requests, anything that's legal, we can keep it for, for all time.
That's legal?
That's legal, or, or that, anything that has Craig's name on it, we can keep it.
But I mean, how are you gonna decide which, what to keep and not to keep?
Probably, at the end of the day, we'll probably just keep everything.
Yeah, there's no way.
That'd be kinda hard, yeah.
At the end of the day, we'll probably just keep everything.
But this wouldn't do text messaging, because that goes through the provider.
They move through the providers, and they control them.
But all they, if you, if you retrieve your text messaging, it doesn't do words, it just does numbers, if I'm not mistaken.
Well, well, so, we've talked to Verizon and Ceasefire and AT&amp;T about this, um, what they claim is that it's an encrypted connection between your phone and Apple servers. So I called Apple, and Apple said, we can provide you the text, but it takes a court order to do it, we will not give it to you unless a judge.
I mean, all they really can provide now is the fact that.
There was a number to a number.
I text you, I text you, you know, right, uh-huh, the number.
So we can get, we can get the text, but AT&amp;T's gonna drag it out.
Hey, let me, let me walk you guys quickly through an analysis here, so a public record act request comes in and says, we want the text messages of Jay Bishop from the period of June one to August one, twenty fourteen. The response to that would be that the Rankin County does not possess a record which complies with that request, specifically that Jay has already deleted all of it. So that's an appropriate response, it doesn't, we don't possess it, if we don't possess the record, we can very well turn it over, right?
Right.
So you're criticized about that.
Right.
You should have figured out a way to be able to possess that record. We would respond, we cannot legally possess such a record, because Apple will not let us, uh, archive that information. So, in other words, if you want the document, go to Apple or go to court. So we're okay, it's just that the Ethics Commission has put us in a box, they've said, they are public records, you need to figure it out. Also, you're not required to tender anything that is personal, so where Jay's got a phone, and he's using it to make
He says, I'll be home, I'll be home a little bit, yeah.
It's not subject to disclosure, it's just county business, it's county business, so now you, now you've got the other issue of, what is the only way to archive stuff like that, is to catch all of it?
Yeah.
So now you got all of this junk that's both intermixed with county and personal.
So you're sending Penny a mushy message, isn't it?
Yeah, out there for everybody, yeah.
You need two Janices, but you need eighteen lawyers.
I thought we had a cap on.
Yes, the only other project we have on the books is, um, we want to, um, upgrade the sheriff's, um, the way the sheriff connects to their public safety software. Currently, we're using Citrix, all those servers are seven, eight years old, falling apart, so we wanna spend some money to fix that. That's really all I've got on the books besides service contracts.
What about personnel?
Personnel, just whatever, whatever raise y'all suggest for the rest of the county, I'm, I'm good with, we've all been working really hard this, this year, but I don't, there's nobody in particular.
What about adding personnel?
No, we don't need to add any more personnel, we're in good shape.
Good deal.
Alright, election, how, how many of our machines are down?
We are putting out two hundred and twenty-three machines, we tested two hundred and twenty-three machines that all worked correctly. That leaves us a little over a hundred spare in the, during the election day.
That's good news, y'all enjoyed that news, didn't you?
Have you tested those things?
Machines were working.
How many of them are broke?
Uh, I think there's a stack, um, off the top of my head, I don't have it, but I think, from what I remember, is about twelve, that we cannot use. For one reason or the other.
Twelve out of the hundred, is that what you're saying?
And they just came and did them, right?
That's correct, that's correct.
It just kills me.
I know.
We pay them for this maintenance, and.
When they come in and do the maintenance, they pop the machine open, they replace a, a battery that we can't replace. If the screen's scratched, they replace the screen, the things that they don't replace, that usually catch up with us, are the big stick batteries that go in, okay? Which, which I keep trying to tell everybody, if you've got power in the building, you don't really need them, okay? But if you don't have enough power to it, it starts acting up, and it'll lock up and, and do funny things on the screen. The other problem you have is, even though they do the maintenance, they don't necessarily touch the screen, so a new screen sometimes looks nice and pretty, but it's stuck, okay? The, that, that glass on those screens, they float like this, and that's how it determines where you push, it triangulates how the glass is leaning, so the glass will get stuck and won't move. We're not allowed to open the machines to fix it. The, the easiest fix is to take credit card and run it around the edge and pop it loose, but that don't always work, so.
So we got two twenty-three, and you feel like that's sufficient to.
Yes, sir.
Take care of us?
Sir. Little bit more than what was in the November.
And we still have eighty-five on standby, so.
Sure do. Alright, any other questions?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Let me know if you need anything else.
Yep, sir. Alright.
Look at the, um, bottom of this VIGL Sash sheet of, um, the General County Budget, you can see that with a few changes I made, these shows were out seven hundred and nine thousand four seventy-four. I have another set for you that I have worked on, where it increases, I have chopped.
Cook has been in the kitchen. Late night.
And this is without used supervisor vehicles? Is that right? What kind of vehicle you gonna wanna drive, Darrell? What are you gonna drive?
Escalade.
No, I don't want Escalade.
If you look at the back page.
Doesn't have to be brand new.
If you look at the back page, you can see in the, uh, surf column, that little dash.
Which column?
Looks like, Z, it looks like a nothing.
That does, I'm taking it back to a balance, but now there was cuts along the way. Um, and what you can see is, the, the first column is our current budget, proposed budget that we're working on. The second one is what was, what was requested by the department, and the third one is what I've adjusted. And the difference column is the difference between what was requested and what was adjusted. Now, y'all, I do that budget anyway, so it looks like there's a big difference there, but what I did was took out the architect fees that I had put in there, and I moved them down under capital projects. So there was no change originally in the, in the chance rates, I didn't change anything, the circuit, um, the tax accessory was actually increased from what John requested to account for a raise, from the seven hundred and fifty to a thousand dollar raise. Tax collectors was increased on my side, and that was to account for the raises and professional speech, and us, we should thank the company to, uh, collect the, uh, delinquent counts. We seem to never have enough money in there, and it always goes cold on end somewhere. Under the county administrator, the difference is just raises. Purchasing, the difference is, uh, raises. Board attorney, that was, um, where I adjusted the rate, what Greg and I had talked about. Superintendent of Education, y'all had told me to cut out some of the things there, I cut out seven, uh, no, uh, nine months of the insurance, cause it will be in place October, November, and December until a new, um, superintendent of education comes in, and then I did some on the utilities there, and telephoned them. Building and grounds, maintenance, basically what I did is, took out fifty thousand out of construction that was in the maintenance, because we can use it out of the Ca- Capital Projects Fund, there was no use having it in.
Both?
In both line items, that was just, and then there's some other, uh, cleaning supplies that I deducted and some things. IT is actually an increase over what they requested, and that's just going from the seven fifty up to the thousand. Veterans officer, there's no change in that one. Community development, that little bit of increase will be taken into the thousand. They're changing the court, Chancery Court, Circuit Court, County Court, uh, youth court is just some miscellaneous adjustments there. Lunacy Court, no change, Justice Court, the increase there is due to the raises. Coroner, Ranger, that's something I need to talk to y'all about, right now, it's not much difference, but you know that our current coroner owns, um, Mississippi Mortuary, where he has, where he stores the bodies, and does not charge. We get a new coroner in here, and I don't know where they're going to store the bodies, and that's probably a service we're gonna have to contract for. And estimating how much that we pay the state, when they have to have a house of body for the autopsy at a hundred and fifty, and the number of deaths that we average in the county, we could be looking at a contract of seventy to ninety thousand dollars.
Wow.
To house those bodies, if, you know, the one that comes in doesn't have a place. That would be, and I, and I haven't addressed that, because I really don't know at this point, I don't know anything about it, so that would have to be probably an amendment.
Well, now, that guy, one of, one of, one of the candidates worked hard and leaves, so he may have some room, and David's got a big shed outside his house.
Are we on, are we on video?
Really have to charge that much?
Oh, yeah.
We gotta give a conditional use of that also.
Part of the gone horse is not being used, brother.
There we go.
That would be a great way to fill it in.
Y'all are almost not sounding as bad as some of the information that when Nancy emailed me the other day from Jimmy's office needing more bags, and I made the mistake of asking her exactly what they were used for, and I got an extremely gory reply, and I emailed her back, and I said, thanks for the gory details, I feel very well informed now, it was, it was quite disgusting. Not a job I would want. The DA, there's just some small miscellaneous adjustments, uh, county attorney also, no change, public defender. Elections, I told y'all, I took out the three hundred and fifty thousand request for the electoral votes and voting machines. Sheriff's administration, no change, general operations, no change, uh, juveniles down a little, that was just where original error was corrected. Ambulance service, no change. EOC, um, we talked about this, I took out the amounts that they had requested in raises, which was quite a bit more than the board was talking about giving. I took the roof that he had put in there for the building, and I moved that over to capital projects funds, because it can be paid for, out of there, will extend the life of the building. I took out the generators that he requested, because we can do that as a one-time charge, should they be needed, and he brings the information, you have to have it, it can be taken out of cash at one time, which wouldn't just inflate the budget for next year, not saying we can't get the generators, we'll have money to do that, and he had requested a new position, but he never gave me any kind of salary for anything, so I haven't.
Who requested a new position?
Bob, Bob, wanted another person down there, we didn't really address it after he asked for it, and he did not give us any money, so I didn't put anything in there, so it.
Oh, that's right, you weren't here last week.
It just didn't come with his request.
Well, he never has replied Scotty, has he?
Yes.
Yeah, he did.
Marty.
With Marty Let's Word.
I just don't think about cutting people, you wanna add them, darn.
And then go down through their National Guard, same, constables, no change, gang order, no change, veteran, no change, uh, bonus grant, no change. FEMA safe room, there is a reduction there, I talked to the sheriff, worked that out with him to reduce that budget sum, then basically, the rest of them down through there are no change. Again, I just dug in that two thousand for the Mississippi Burn Center, they didn't get, they requested a donation, they didn't even give an amount, what they were requesting. I, I just put that in there, but I don't know that that's what y'all wanna do, up or down. No change in the rest of them in capital projects, I added the two hundred thousand for architect fees, and we also added, um, some more for our inter-fund transfers. Basically, that's taking everybody from seven hundred and fifty raises to a thousand, and the reason I can do that is, the sheriff's department has the bulk of General County, um, employees. Outside of his, and outside of part-time and elected officials, it left about eighty-five people to change from seven hundred and fifty to a thousand. By virtue of using the step system, when we plugged in seven fifty, so nobody got less than seven fifty, they were already right at a thousand, so we didn't change that many people, it may be allowing me to make an adjustment from seven fifty to a thousand for less than twenty-five thousand dollars, because of what the sheriff's budget had in it. So, taking into consideration everything that I have changed, that y'all can see, it balances the budget.
How much of the one point three million increase from last year's budget to this year's budget is salarying?
Uh, at seven fifty, we'd be looking at, with fringes and all, you'd be looking at close to five hundred, between four and five. It was hard for me to calculate this year, because I plugged in the sheriff's amount that he had requested, um, like what he told y'all, he was doing, he's bringing the entry-level position that was eleven eighteen an hour up to twelve fifty-four, but he's not gonna do it immediately. He's going to bring them on still at the eleven eighteen, to your dispatchers and your jailers, then when they've completed their certification, they'll go up to twelve fifty-four. Likewise, a deputy, he increased from, they were coming in to twelve something, and they'll be coming in fourteen. Now, in his, what Ken gave to me in the raise package that they have, which is equivalent to at least a thousand per person, some people over there won't get raises, and some will get more than, you know, two thousand, because he's trying to bring everybody into line with the number of years that they have as a deputy, and when they got their certifications and all. So there'll be some not getting any, and some getting more than that. But they wanted to get everybody more, because they had salaries all over the charts, so they're trying to get them more into compliance.
So seven fifty's five hundred?
Thereabouts, Jay, between, you know, four fifty and five hundred with fringes.
And a thousand was?
Well, a thousand's gonna push you closer to, um, your six hundred figure, but like I said, this year with the sheriff's in there, it was a little bit harder for me to gauge, because I took what he requested. I didn't just work it at seven fifty per person or a thousand per person.
Anybody else think we need to look at the fire coordinator salary?
Yeah.
I thought we did.
I did.
Yeah, I do too.
The what? Fire coordinator.
Man, I know I didn't go over it while you were going over EOC, but.
Well, he's actually on the miscellaneous sheet of volunteer fire department.
Oh.
I thought we did give him a raise a couple of years ago.
Couple of years ago?
No. Last year, several got three and four thousand dollars raised.
Did the director get the same?
Who you talking about?
When?
Last year.
Brett Ishi.
I think Brett got left out a couple of years ago.
No, everybody's gotten a raise when everybody else has, but he got an increase when.
Right, he did.
Yeah, he got one, Bob got one.
He was talking about going to Pearl.
Scott got one, and he quit.
Yeah.
And, um, at that same time, Rusty got one.
Twenty-four, seven.
Didn't he make like fifty-five?
I heard he got shorted.
What? Didn't he make like fifty-five?
I always said I've heard him.
I always saw he got it.
Yeah. He, yeah.
I think you brought him on at thirty, Jay.
He got shorted because he didn't get what he asked for.
Probably.
I'm gonna play it, that's what he's saying, that. But actually, he was.
When.
Looked at the best.
His predecessor.
But he wanted, oh, said another five thousand.
What was he making? Seventy's all?
Yeah, the director.
That was just salary.
Leave something. Actually, actually, I think, I think he and the director.
Yes.
Forty-five.
He's what? Brett's.
We're live. If y'all want to discuss.
Move personnel. True. Just personnel. Car. Well, what else?
That's all I have. I need to know, um, if there's any other departments that you'd like to talk to, and when y'all want to meet again on this to wrap it up.
Any other department, anybody?
Um, somebody did request that Renee come, and I, I told her she could do neither on the third, the next time we meet, to go over.
Yeah, I want Renee to come.
And, and things like that. And she said that she would.
Right. Yeah, 'cause I'd like to know some breakdown on what the overlay's done for us, I mean.
Might want to let her know that, if she don't have that.
Put it in writing, close to.
I, I.
My district, please.
See if they.
My district.
Yeah, okay. The what?
I was picking on him. He thinks I'm serious.
Oh, I thought you were. Um, well, uh, when do we meet again? The third, but maybe about after that? I don't think she'll be ready then.
It's not enough time between now and the time, next time we meet, for me to read all this.
Yeah, really. Uh, the, when do we meet after the third?
Stay inside, close to.
Very nice.
The next scheduled meeting would be on the seventeenth, which is a Monday. But we probably need to meet sometime between then to try to.
We'll meet.
Burn out anything else that we need to on budget.
But not on the third.
You don't think we do that seventeenth? We still have a, a month, right?
I buy the seventeenth. I have a few days left that I have to publish, because it has to run two weeks before September's meeting.
Uh-huh.
So I have to have it to the paper. We could do it on seventeen. If you make too many changes, though, we will be up here to be looking at.
Okay.
Well, let's don't do it on seventeen.
Let's do it on the thirteenth.
Ken, what's that? Thursday?
Thursday.
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 Before.
And Craig, I think we're meeting on the twelfth.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
The thirteenth, would that be, would that work for everybody?
As far as I know.
What's the date? Thirteen?
Well, I mean, you're on the twelfth. It doesn't matter to me. You'll do it on Fri- Thursday or Friday.
Now, Mr. Sawyer and I are.
Thursday would be fine.
On the twelfth. With Mr. Bishop.
At what time?
Oh, that's with.
Oh. I can't do it on thirteen.
Do it on thirteen.
Walter can't do it on thirteen. Walter can.
Eleven?
That's a Wednesday. That's a Wednesday.
Tuesday.
That's Tuesday.
I'm good.
I'm good.
I'm good.
Tuesday mornings?
I'm good, yeah.
Aye.
What time?
Seven?
Seven o'clock.
Nine o'clock.
Seven o'clock, be out of here.
Seven o'clock?
Whatever y'all want, I'm good. They will make it.
Bring plenty coffee.
Huh?
Nine o'clock.
Eight o'clock?
We need to give Renee an opportunity to get all her stuff together, you know?
Nine o'clock on the eleventh?
Yeah, the su- Mr. Bishop, we are live.
Do you want to try to move Chase to the eleventh that afternoon, Craig?
We can, although, uh, you know, he was suggesting that we come over there.
Oh, that is, that's right, we are going over there.
That's what I need to know before I confirm this, if y'all gonna stay here or go there.
I'm good, whatever he suggests.
We're, we're voting it there. It makes sense, since they'll have all their stuff set up.
And we'll have, we'll have food and coffee and all that.
Yep.
Gee, I might want to go.
Yeah, no. Y'all are not getting.
Sorry, I only took.
No, what?
We're not getting a ceasefire program.
Oh, no, we're not?
No.
Won't ever get it down there. Houses are too far apart.
I don't know who's gonna get it when.
No, we won't get it down my way, so. Long time.
We through?
I backed out.
For today.
Alright.
Wouldn't come and feel that.
So we need to make a motion to.
Is there anything else y'all need to add, take away or change?
So, have y'all, did y'all discuss while I was gone, uh, what sal- what increase we were gonna do? Seven fifty or a thousand?
She just told you a few minutes ago, the difference when it jumped up just twenty.
Right, yeah.
It jumped up twenty-five grand for if she plugged in a thousand. I thought you said twenty-five.
No, just about twenty-five to take those people outside of the sheriff's department from seven fifty to a thousand.
Yeah.
Well, now that you have the numbers crunched and.
But countywide.
Pretty much balanced, what will you do with the six mil increase?
Countywide was a hundred.
I don't have a clue what you're talking about.
They what now? What do you say?
I asked her, she had the ba- bu- uh, budget balanced, and everything was kinda in line. What is she gonna do with the money generated by the six mil increase?
What about the three mil decrease I thought we were doing?
Oh.
We're live, Greg. Don't stir up something. That you may be doing.
Push it.
I'm not voting.
Push it.
Well, you got Walter sitting here with a six mil increase. I'm like, wait a minute here.
Just gestating.
Do you want.
What?
Do you want to do a ceasefire or not?
Yeah.
Okay.
Alright.
Motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Do we adjourn or recess?
Adjourn.
Reset.
Motion to adjourn to the third of August.
Okay. Motion to adjourn, Mr. Bishop, Secretary of State Keith, on favor of say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you.